So hot.
Oh, good.
Enjoying the pageant right now?
No, he's done. He's actually home.
Oh, good.
He missed all the fun of the circus.
Donna? I'm.
We probably should have put on more work.
I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Camo will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
My pledge will be this.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stop the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Gloria, you need to let us know if you're alone and if there's anyone in the room with you and if you can hear us.
I can hear you. I'm in the room by myself.
Thank you.
What causes her to not be able to be present?
What causes you not to be present?
I had some teeth extracted and fixed today, and my jaw is swollen, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. So Nashville Community Power was pleased to announce last week that the rate for Nashville Community Power customers will drop as of August 1st to a rate from 15.8 cents, the current rate, to 10.9 cents per kilowatt hour. So this is what, nearly a one-third reduction. We will, through this reduction, continue to save money for Nashville citizens on their monthly electric bills as we have been doing as part of Nashville Community Power since the beginning of May. This rate will be good until the end of January 2024, and then will be, or might be readjusted as a result of market conditions at the time. But that should be good news for all Nashville consumers who were part of Nashville Community Power. In addition, Nashville Community Power offers rates for the purchase of greener power than is the standard supply. If you wish to have 100% green energy, that's an addition of 4.3 cents per kilowatt. And of course, that's totally optional. You can do, you can opt into that, but obviously you don't have to. If you want 50% renewable or green power, then the rate is 1.4%, 1.4 cents per kilowatt hour or higher. And if you want 33% renewable energy, then you must pay an additional four tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. Doria Brown is here to answer any questions if people do have further questions about it. But I want to thank her and everybody from the city staff who's involved in the community power effort over a long period of time for saving Nashville consumers really millions of dollars already. Madam President, I also wanted to briefly mention R-23126, which creates an expendable trust fund. And I just wanted to clarify that this involves no city money. The multi, this is for the multicultural festival, which is being held on September 10th, Sunday, September 10th, at the library. The promoters, the organizers of the multicultural festival are raising donations and sponsors, and they need to have a place to put this money so that it can then be expended to, it can be used to meet the expenses of the multicultural festival. If there is money left over at the end of the year, at the end of the project, at the end of the festival, then this would be carried over to the next year so that it can continue to be an entirely privately funded enterprise, a privately funded festival, and we don't need to use city money at all. Previously, a nonprofit had agreed to allow them to run their money through their 501(c)(3), but the nonprofit didn't want to do that anymore. So now we need the expendable trust fund. And we will, in the multicultural festival, be celebrating the many ethnic backgrounds we have in Nashua that have built our community and our economy over a long, long period of time. And finally, Madam President, this is the same kind of arrangement, the trust fund, the expendable trust fund that we have for the Pride Parade, where that too is privately funded through donations and sponsorships. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention, and I think the City Clerk Healy is going to mention this as well, we would like to get your authorization to go to the Executive Council to hold the special election for Ward 4 on September 12th, to go inside with the mayor's election so that we can, we don't have to bring the election workers out on an additional day, and we can just use them for the two elections. We think that's completely doable. If you give the City Clerk your authorization, then he will go to the Executive Council in Concord, which needs to authorize and finally authorize the date. But we expect if the Board of Alderman requests this particular date, that that will be approved. So I hope you will, Madam President, consider taking action on that tonight. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Response to the remarks of Mayor. Start over here, Alderman O'Brien. Anyone over here? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Ms. Brown for working so hard to get the rate dropped. You know, there's times when we really want to try to drive the tax rate down, and we haven't been able to do that. But being able to drive at least the electric bills down for people, I think, is a great thing. And when I was at work at Ever Source and I saw that they were going down to 12 point something cents per kilowatt hour, I panicked, thinking that we just dropped it to 15 in Nashville Community Power, and now it's going that way. So she was able to do whatever magic her and the city workers are able to do to get that down to 10.9 cents. So I think that's fantastic, and I think hopefully, you know, the city, people in the city are jumping on that and making sure they're with Nashville Community Power so they can save some money on their electric bill. Thank you.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Alderman meeting of June 28th, 2023 to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa Foto, Public Works Director, regarding referral from Board of Alderman R-23-123 and R-23128. Communication has been received from Julian Long, Urban Programs Manager, regarding community development, block grant, reallocation, opportunity networks, and plus company.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Jen Hosking. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes for your comments.
Thank you. I'm Jen Hosking. I'm the Assistant Director at the Nashua Public Library at 31 Twist Lane in Hollis. And I'm here also as a member of the Planning Committee for the Shears Nashua Multicultural Festival. And I wanted to thank the Budget Committee for their support of the creation of an expendable trust for this festival, and also request that the full board consider it as well. We're excited to kick off Welcoming Week this year on September 10th. The festival will be held, as you heard, outside at the library on the plaza in the parking lot, and we have some great performances, cultural performances, some delicious food planned, as well as opportunities for learning about the different cultures represented in our community. So it's a great collaborative community event, and I hope to gather your support for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Daniel Healy, City Clerk, regarding resignation of Ward 4 State Representative David Cody.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Clerk to deliver a letter on behalf of the Board of Alderman to the Governor and Executive Council asking for approval to hold a special election to fill the Ward 4 State Representative vacancy.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion?
Oh, yes. And Madam President, may I have it by roll call, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, please.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the May 30th, May 31st, June 1st, and June 21st, 2023 budget review committees be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Greeley Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Stephanie Ballantyne, 9 Bartlett Avenue, Nashua, with a term to expire June 13th, 2026, to the Greeley Park Advisory Committee, and she will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-126, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for the Nashua Multicultural Festival.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-126.
You've heard the motion. Discussion. It has to be roll call. Correct. Yes. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So this came before the Budget Committee, and I expressed disappointment that there was no one there to speak to us about it. And I'm glad that the mayor gave a very satisfactory explanation this evening. And I'm glad that someone from the library came and also, you know, added to it. And so I voted for it with reservations because I didn't know enough information at the committee meeting, but I wholeheartedly support it, and we'll vote for it tonight. And I hope that in the future, that anyone that's sponsoring a resolution that's coming before a committee, that they make sure that, you know, that someone comes to explain it to us. And if no one is available, that they let the chairman know so that it can be tabled until the next meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I was not, I don't think I was a sponsor of it, but I am the liaison for the Cultural Connections Committee. I was out of town, but I would have loved to have presented on all the work that the Cultural Connections Committee is doing and the plan for the multicultural festival. So I just want to apologize, Alderman Jettie, that I wasn't present to do that. I've been pretty involved with Cultural Connections Committee for several years. I think this is a very important sustainability step for helping the multicultural festival continue forward. And it helps with transparency because having all of the different partners and having the changes in priorities and necessities that comes with that managing such a committee and a collection of interests, it is in the city's best interest to be supportive of it in order to be that receptacle so that taxpayers can see where money's coming from, where it's going, and how it's benefiting the community. In the past, we've had a lot of really good community partners. The United Way, I think, is chief among them. But the United Way is a nonprofit organization. They have their own record-keeping, and the multicultural festival really is a Nashua city event. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries, and Resolution 23126 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-127, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and the five Nashua Police Department Unions regarding a police department recruiting incentive.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23127 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this was originally brought out during the budget discussions in detail by the chief, and the Budget Committee passed it unanimously. And it's a motion to allow for us, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. It's a motion to allow the Police Department to pay people bonuses for finding new officers. It's limited in how much they would pay out, and it's been approved by all the unions, and it's all coming out of their assigned budget, so there's no additional funding required. So I recommend the final passage.
You've heard the motion? Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23127 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-128, relative to the acceptance of an electronic scoreboard located at Murray Field, donated to the city by the Kyle Beddinger Memorial Trust in establishing an expendable trust fund related to the scoreboard funded by appropriations.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motion to amend R-23-128 by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of the amendments made at the Budget Review Committee, if I may speak to that, and obviously, this is by roll call.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. This amendment amends the original to the, I guess the best way to say is, is the split between where it was originally going to go of the Cal Ripken Baseball League and the city, to the city and to the Greater Nashville Little League baseball. It was a very unusual split, and myself and Alderman Como had a long talk about, we had originally come up with a different plan, and we really felt that it was more equitable to do the 45% and 10% rather than waiting for a $10,000 type of thing and so on. It became quite confusing to try to do it the other way. We felt this was cleaner and more equitable.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would echo the previous comments, and I'd also just like to add that the amendment does have the support of the Department of Public Works. This is, like Alderman Cle said, a much more equitable split of the funds. It's going to benefit everybody pretty equally, so it's pretty much the best-case scenario we're in. Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman Tebow.
So I have a few things to say about it, so.
On the motion to amend?
No, I can wait, I guess. I can wait.
The motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motion for final passage of R-23-128 as amended and by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it again.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you so much. Again, this was a very unique situation. The way the whole came up, came about, I think it was brought to Alderman Camo's attention and Public Works that the, there was signage that was put out on 101A in front of Murray Field, and it was an advertisement. And without having gotten the appropriate, I guess it's approvals by the state, because that is a state highway, so it was brought to that. We looked into it. There was quite a lot of confusion. This scoreboard had been donated to the Cal Ripken League, which is very good, and we're glad that they did that. The problem is that it's city property, city electricity, and if they were to move, that scoreboard is going to stay there. So the city was not quite involved in it, yet we were. There was confusion with the person from Parks and Recs who said that, yes, we could accept it, but it was never accepted by the city. So we're kind of backtracking here a little bit, accepting the donation. The flip side of it is, is actually the flip side of it, the side that has the advertisement and so on. And that's where the expendable trust comes in. The city will now put this out to bid to get the appropriate advertisement. The advertisement was given to one particular company in perpetuity for a very low rate. And when we talked about this and looked at it, we thought this money could come in, not go into the general fund, but go in to help support Cal Ripken as well as, without Cal Ripken losing any monies. When we had a conversation with them, we kind of came up with what I had talked about before, a particular breakout, so that they would not lose what they were getting. The only problem was between the confusion and if they were to leave and so on. I will admit, when we first started talking about it, I said, no advertisement, no nothing. Let's just make this clean and not do it because I was afraid of repercussions at other fields and so on. The rules have always been advertisements on the inside of the field. This one is a little bit, a little bit different. The advertisement that's there is a very well-respected company here in Nashua, and it's a very well-done sign. So again, the reason for the expendable trust fund is so that we make sure that the money goes into that account and not mixed with other things, so it's very clean, much like the one we just talked about. It's very transparent. We can see how the breakup, the breakout happens, very equitable and so on. And there is a 10% that will go into the city's coffer because this particular field is not maintained by Cal Ripken, and Alderman Como can speak more to that. And they no longer take care of the field. The city takes care of the field. The city does everything. So we did feel that there should be some money that comes into, 10% of it would be for the city use for maintaining the sign, for doing all of these things, because there is going to be some upheaval to that sign. So I will end here, and I know that Alderman Como has even more information, so thank you.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Again, I'd echo all of the previous comments. Like Alderman Cle said, this sign went up a couple of years ago. Cal Ripken believed that they had permission from the city. They got permission from somebody who didn't really have the ability to grant it, but granted it anyway. So we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up here. Cal Ripken operates the field at the moment. They are the league that uses Murray Field. But that situation can change, you know, on a yearly basis. Sometimes the fields get rotated around. So we wanted to make sure that the money that came in due to selling the advertising space on the back of the sign was something that we could use to benefit both of the leagues. And then, as Alderman Cle mentioned, also put a portion aside for field maintenance and things like that, for things that Parks and Rec needs to do to maintain that field. The leagues generally take care of their own fields. I know Cal Ripken takes care of Doobee Field down on Harris Road. Nashville Little League takes care of La Joy Field. But Murray Field, it was either last year or the year before, the city retook control of maintaining the field as far as mowing the grass and doing things like that. So we did feel it was important to carve out just a small section of the advertising revenue to make sure that that field maintenance was self-sustaining and something that would be able to be done year over year. So overall, Department of Public Works, Alderman Cle and myself as co-sponsors, we all agree that this is the best possible outcome. The two solutions were either find a way to make this work or to tear the thing down. And to tear it down really benefits nobody. You know, the Kyle Beddinger Trust donated this beautiful scoreboard that looks great on the field from the field side. You know, there was some things that happened on the back that, you know, we can't go back in time, but we can use what's there now to benefit a lot of kids playing baseball in this city. And so for those reasons, you know, I speak for Alderman Cle and myself, we would appreciate support on this. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Like I said before, I have a few things to say about this. At this current time, I'm not supporting it. I'll explain why. And I may or may not have a motion for an amendment at the end, or I'd like to see what other people think. But, you know, first I want to thank Alderman Camo and Alderman Cle because I know it was a tricky negotiation with Cal Ripken. You know, they thought they had done something right, but they didn't. And so, you know, if you don't know the speed limit, you still get charged with ticket, you know. So yes, they didn't know, and they thought they were doing the right process, but at the end of the day, they didn't. So I thank them because I know it was, I talked to Alderman Cle about it. It wasn't, you know, it didn't always go smoothly. You know, I wasn't able to come to the committee meeting, but I did watch it, and obviously, I couldn't make any motions of those not being part of the committee. But I heard Alderman Jettie say, someone said, and I think we heard it here today too, "Oh, it's equal parts." And Alderman Jettie said, "No, it's not equal parts. It's 45, 45, 10." And so that made me start to think a little bit about this. So a little bit of background is, there's probably no one in this room that knows more about Cal Ripken than me since I was the president for two years, on the board for five and a half. Alderman Camo was close because he was the Little League president during some of that time and was on the board and did a lot of things for Little League. So, you know, me and him are about as close as it can be to the baseball stuff in the city. I'll tell you right now, Cal Ripken would die to give up Murray. They will do whatever they can to hold that field because that's really the gem. That and La Joy are the gems of the city. They're beautiful fields, and they're well-maintained. So this was built just a little bit after I was gone. They started to talk about it before. I was not president anymore. I was just coaching the league. But they started to talk about this. So I do know the ins and outs of Cal Ripken and how it works. And I will tell you right now, the revenue that they bring in is very good. You know, at any point, their books are 30,000 to 60,000 that they have on hand. And that was so that we could buy uniforms and pay the umpires and do all the things you need to do, equipment and stuff like that. They have tons of sponsors. They have signs on all their fields, inside their fields, like Alderman Cle said, that make good money. Convenient MD puts a giant one over at Murray, huge, and they were giving us 5,000 a year for those signs. I mean, that's money coming in. Plus, they charge at least $50 now, maybe more. They get private donations. They do fundraisers, calendar events where we've made 25,000 on. So they have money coming in. They host tournaments, which also bring in money. They have concessions that bring in money. I'll explain why I'm bringing this up. And they charge to play All-Stars. So they got money coming in. City basketball, for instance, is 20 bucks, right? And that's it, right? That's all they get. But baseball, for Cal Ripken, they're getting money. Um, but baseball, for Cal Ripken, they're getting money, they're not making profit, but they're making money so they can turn it back into their, their program. And I'm sure Little League does separate, uh, same kind of thing. Um, when you go to Cal Ripken Fields, they have all the tools, they have rakes, they have tampers for the mound, they have, um, shovels, they have mowers, they have draggers, they have line for the chalk, for the lines. They have speedy dry, so when it rains, they can put that out so they can play games. And, you know, a couple of these fields have great scoreboards, whether they're manual ones or whether they're beautiful, um, you know, electronic ones. Babe Ruth in the city, run by Parks and Rec, has none of that. They don't give us, or I should say, that's only because I'm coaching it right now, but I haven't been coaching it forever, and I won't be coaching it forever. But they don't give you lime to chalk the fields, they don't give you machines to do it. They give you one rake at North Common to do a 90-foot field, 90, you know, 90-foot diamond field. Um, we don't have nice scoreboards there, actually, we don't have any at North Common or at Ledge Street, right? We still want kids to play after Babe Ruth, after Cal Ripken and after Little League, and the next place is Babe Ruth. But the city doesn't really do anything with the fields, too much, um, you know, and, you know, we had a championship game this year, they didn't line our fields, but they went and they lined Cal Ripken's fields. When Cal Ripken has all the equipment, and we've always done it when I was a coach down there, to do it. They have money, they have equipment, the Babe Ruth program has none of this. We don't have enclosed dugouts. Um, you know, and again, like, no effective tools, nothing to fix the mound. Um, the draggers are there without ropes to pull them, you have to pull the metal, right? Um, and they, there's no revenue that comes into that, it's just part of the Parks and Rec, you know, overhead. And so, you know, soccer is a pretty big deal in the city, other fields, you know, obviously the school fields get done, so Parks and Rec aren't looking at our two fields in Babe Ruth and really spending a lot of money to that. So, when I see a, a trust fund that, you know, just goes to Parks and Rec, the 10%, how am I going to know that's going back into the baseball program in the city? Because we have a baseball program outside of Cal Ripken and outside of Little League. But just putting it in Parks and Rec does not get it to baseball, for one. We want kids to play after that, we don't want them to go away from baseball, but Cal Ripken's and Little League are both great experiences, because there is the concessions and the, the, you know, the, they have the booths where you can announce players and play music, and they got all the, the, the exciting parts of playing baseball behind it, right? Get a hot dog, hear your name, play the anthem, watch the scoreboard, and we don't get that here for the city stuff, which gets neglected. And so, I was thinking more of an equal split, and I don't, I don't see why Cal Ripken, just because they were the ones that got the, the, the sign put up, well, great, they got the scoreboard, but why does that have to go more to them, more to Little League? Little League's not participating in this, so why can't it be an equal split? Or, um, why can't it be 50% Cal Ripken and 25, 25? Why does it have to be city gets 10%? And again, I'm not thinking of this to, to give to the city coffers or the public recs coffers, I want it to go to city baseball. When we have one rake, and I can walk over to Murray Field, and they have five rakes, and they have a smaller field, that to me is a problem. And I've asked for an extra rake for two years, last year Jeff and Parks and Rec said, "We don't have the money for an extra rake." And the one we had was like, basically falling apart. They did get an extra rake at Ledge Street this year, so we have two rakes, one broken, one regular. But those are where the schools play too. Elm Street plays at North Common, for now. Fairgrounds plays at Ledge Street. So, why aren't we making sure that the experience for all kids at all ages is the same? Why do we, why are we only looking at Cal Ripken and Little League? And again, it's not anything to do with either Alderman or what they put in, it's about, to me, what I think is fair for the kids of the city. And it's not against Cal Ripken, it's not against Little League, it's for all three organizations. I'm not going to make a motion at this time, but I want people to think about that, and I want to be on record to, to show that. I'm trying to spread it out equally, I want people to care about all three, right? Because kids should get something when they move up to Babe Ruth, and they get a lot less than they get at the, they're not, I guess, nonprofit programs or what they are, but they, these programs make a lot of money, Cal Ripken brings in a ton of money. Thank you.
Sir, Alderman Clemmons, next.
Well, I, I have a question, and maybe, maybe it can go through you to one of the co-sponsors. Um, who, I guess my question would be, when the sign was built, uh, who was it and who is it now that negotiates the advertising on the back of it? Was that the league, or was that the city? Uh, that's my question.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, uh, thank you, and I'd like to answer that question, and then just one comment, if I can, for the other issue. But to, to your answer, um, currently, um, the contract and so on was negotiated by Cal Ripken. The city had nothing to do with it. Once this takes over, we've already sent a, um, letter to the person who currently has the contract, um, that it will end at the end of this year. That's why it's important for us to get this through, so that we can go out for bid and, and get this before the end of the year. Um, this has kind of been dragging on, because it was such a complicated, um, situation, so, right now, Cal Ripken has a contract with the current, um, person in perpetuity, and the city had no part of that, no funds, no anything, no acknowledgement of it.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So, is, i- i- is what's going to happen now that, that the, at the end of this year, the city is going to be doing the advertising?
May I?
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Um, the city will be putting it out for, for bid, like Public Health puts out for the, the signs and so on, so yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will be.
Alderman Cle, I'm going to get back to you, because I had Alderman, Alderman Kelly.
Uh, thank you, and I want to say, it sounds like there was a lot that went into this, so thank you for the Aldermen who have been working on this. I was unable to attend the evening that we talked about it as well. Might have been a dance recital, anyways. Um, so, knowing a little bit about advertising, my questions are more around that. Um, we're, we're potentially taking over the advertising there, but those, those, uh, fees could be different depending, it's actually a very busy intersection, so it might actually be something that is very, um, to Alderman Cle's point, um, advantageous in terms of how much that can be charged. So, my concerns are around things like, we have in budget talked a lot about Expendable Trust Funds, and ones that get put up with kind of weird appropriations and how they're set up. For example, the David's, what is it, David Dean Skate Park has like, an astronomical amount of money in it, because the money from the cellphones going there. So, my concern is that we don't really know what that ad, ad revenue might be, and we're setting ourselves up to put a lot of money in this trust fund, because we don't really know all those parameters. So, I guess there's not really a question there, but maybe there is, if, if either of the makers of the motion know, um, if there was any work done in terms of what they think that annual revenue would be from the advertising.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so, there were some estimates, uh, no hard numbers, and some of these conversations were over a year ago, so the information might be out of date by now, anyway. Um, but that, those numbers, those discussions were kind of what we used to come up with the 45, 45 number, um, and that is, we, we were kind of baselining on if we got something around $10,000 a year, uh, and Cal Ripken got 45% of that, that would equal what they're getting now, uh, on their current contract. So, that's what Alderman Cle meant when she said they wouldn't lose anything. Uh, and as far as a larger chunk to Parks and Rec, um, we actually did discuss that. I, I mentioned to Director Photo wanting some of the money to go to Babe Ruth, and it was expressed to me that Babe Ruth has almost no costs, and they don't need the money, and she, um, said that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be used as efficiently as it would be if we just, uh, did it the way that's currently, uh, laid out. It's also worth noting that between Cal Ripken and Nashville Little League, there's probably, I'd estimate, 600 or 700 kids playing baseball or more, and there's probably 100 or less playing Babe Ruth. By the time they get to those ages, uh, you know, they're playing high school ball, they're playing travel ball, or they've, or they've probably given up the sport. Uh, it's just dwindling numbers at that point. And lastly, about Babe Ruth, you know, there, there is a lot of great things that happens at Cal Ripken and Nashville Little League games, uh, like Alderman Tebow mentioned, you know, the announcing and the music and the concessions and all that. That's also due to the fact that there are tons of people involved making that happen. And my experience in, in Babe Ruth was we were lucky to, to get coaches. So, I mean, even if we had a snack bar or an announcer's booth, we wouldn't have anybody to run it, because, like I said, the, the numbers are just dwindling at that point, so it's, it's a matter of, we could put money in the account for Babe Ruth, but if there's nobody to do anything, and there's, you know, there's a very small Parks and Rec staff, like, the money would just sit there. Um, but it was discussed, and the best outcome we came up with was to put it in this park rehabilitation fund, so it's not going to go in Park and Rec's general fund, it's going to go in the very specific park rehabilitation fund, which is only used to maintain the ballfields in the city. So, that's how we determined it would be the, the best way to, to use the money. And if we do really, really well on the contract and make a lot of money, uh, it won't just sit in the account, it will go to these organizations to, to fund the things that they need to do, whether that be the two leagues or whether it be the, uh, the park rehabilitation fund. Hopefully, we do have some really, really good contracts, and we can start checking off some of these projects that have been on Parks and Rec's list for, for years.
Alderman Kelly, you have a follow-up?
I did have a follow-up, thank you. Um, so, did you guys consider a flat rate? Uh, we know they're about getting 10,000, did that come up in discussion versus a percentage?
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, we did talk about that, um, but as you know, being in advertisement, things can fluctuate from year to year, and we did not want to commit a certain amount, because then we felt that it could end up coming out of the general fund if we said they're always going to get this much money. We did the up to, we talked about that, if it hit 10,000, um, then, then money would go into Parks and Rec, and it wouldn't do it until, until that, and so on. Um, trust me, there was a, over a year of discussion, over a year of trying to get through this particular thing, um, and originally, we didn't have anything for, for the city. We didn't have anything, and we did talk about, about Babe Ruth. Um, I, I did want to see money go in there, because I know Babe Ruth is, is basically more or less free to the, to the kids that want to, want to be in it and so on, so. We did talk about money going in there, it was Public Works that, that kind of nixed it. And, and that's why we, we pulled it out. Um, and it was Alderman, uh, Como who actually said, "We really need to put money, guarantee money for, uh, for the city to maintain the sign and do it through the parks rehab, um, program," so that there would always be kind of money going into that. So, the 10% gets actually pulled out of this and put into, I think it's called the Expendable Trust Fund, number 7058, Park Rehabilitation. So, it doesn't buy rakes, and it doesn't necessarily buy that particular thing, but I, I do get your points, so, thank you.
Alderman Como, did you have comments? Are you all set?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, then I have Alderman Cle.
I did.
You, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, then I have Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, a, a couple of things. It, unbelievably disappointing that Parks and Rec would say, "No, no, 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 we don't need money." I, I coach at those fields. You need money, maybe you don't have people to do the work, maybe that's it, but, sorry, I'm supporting you guys, you need money. And if the park rehabilitation, does that mean it's just baseball parks? Like, that, it's not specific, unless it's, it's, it's coded that way somewhere, that it is specific that it can only go towards baseball fields. And, great, it doesn't buy rakes, so that's why I would prefer a Expendable Trust Fund for Babe Ruth, because then you could buy rakes with it. But, um, you know, the schools play at those fields too, so it's not just Babe Ruth. And, you know, to Alderman Como's point, I don't, I'm not looking for concessions built or overhead dugouts, I'm just comparing that we, we don't have those things, so it'd be nice to have the basic things, which we don't have. Um, because, you know, at that point, we're not going to have that kind of fanfare, and that's, that's completely okay, but you want the basic necessities to be able to play a game when it rains a little bit, and you have to not play, because you don't have enough speedy dry to, to take care of the field. Um, and, I mean, it, it's, it, it's hard that, that I heard that she said that, because we literally didn't have anybody to do our lines, and they said the field was all set, and it wasn't. Um, but they went over to Cal Ripken and all over Facebook, "The city helped us get our fields ready today," and they couldn't come over to a, you know, just a pure city field. And, you know, they have, like Alderman Como said, they have plenty of people that help out in those, at those, those levels to do lines and all that stuff. I did them all the time. Um, but at Babe Ruth, you don't, and it's sad that, you know, we are losing kids. He's right, we're losing kids to other sports, we, kids stop playing at this point, they're driving, they get, there's girls, you know, they, they stopped playing. And it's sad, right, you know, we have coaches in the city, one of them last year, Adam, got an award for 30 years in the coaching, we did it at Holman. And so, we do have coaches that have been doing it a long time, and the teams have been dwindling as far as, as, as the amount of kids. And it would be nice, the kids that are playing high school, and the kids that are playing in travel, what about the kids that just want to play the game? And these are the kids that continue on to play Babe Ruth, they just want to play baseball. They don't, they're not maybe trying out for high school, or trying out for, you know, very expensive travel team, they want to play baseball. And so, I'm not asking for all that crazy stuff. I just want the fields to be done, an extra rake, a few tools to make sure the mound's presentable so kids can pitch off of it, that's all. And, and numbers are dwindling, maybe Babe Ruth will go, go away completely someday. I hope not, you know, and, uh, you know, it was a great season, and I, I look forward to, to fall ball, but it would be nice if we had something for the city, and I don't, again, if this park rehabilitation fund doesn't, doesn't satisfy the needs that we have, then, I mean, why, I'm probably not going to vote for it. And it's not because I don't want the money to go to the kids, I do, but I just, I guess it's more against the Public Works than it is against anything else, you know?
Alderman Karen.
I don't know where to begin. I am so appalled and shocked by the comments that, um, Alderman Tebow said about the city's Parks and Recreation Department is not taking care of their fields. I don't care whether you're playing Little League, Cal Ripken, Senior Babe Ruth, Babe Ruth, those fields were supposed, are supposed to be done every day. They have, they're supposed to have schedules of games, and those fields should be raked, there should be things there for coaches to work on when it's, when it's raining or what have you. The small amount of money, which I think is fine for rehab, but the last time all our parks and playgrounds was done, it cost us over $10 million, because we do not take care of our facilities. When I left, I thought I left, and I left it in great hands, I knew it was going to hap, it was going to be great. We had over 35 teams just in baseball. Cal Ripken and Little League worked hand-in-hand with Park Rec. There was a time when no one did anything, but parents and volunteers and coaches decided that because the city was growing, they would step in and help. It didn't mean that the city walked away and stopped mowing the grass or lining the fields. That's their job. I want to say, what the heck are we doing if we're not out there taking care of the fields for these kids to play? Yeah, social media has taken over, and kids don't want to do some of the things that a lot of us did when we were growing up, because we were outside. But it, it breaks my heart to think, we are not taking care of our kids that can't afford $2,000 to participate in a program, or $50. That $20 doesn't pay for everything, but it's, it's to make them, give them the incentive to know that they pay $20 and they're going to show up and play. And they've got coaches, and I had coaches, 40 years coaching, they brought a lot of kids up because of this. I, I, I don't know what Park Rec is doing, I don't know what DPW is doing, but this is shameful, shameful. And whatever little money you would get, and we shouldn't put another Expendable Trust just for Babe Ruth, that's ridiculous, no offense. They should, they should be doing their job, and we're not doing it. And that's why people aren't, these kids aren't coming out, these kids need this. We had two young men who never played basketball, started off with a lawyer, junior biddy, and became two of the top basketball players for the natural high school. But he took them under his wing and got them into the city's program, paid for their registration, because he knew their parents couldn't do this. That's what the city's about, that's why you have a park and recreation department. I'm sorry, being passionate about this, but I am so, I, I, I was getting blown away by Alderman Tebow's comments. If you want your kids to get outside, you've got to provide them with these activities. You can't just blow it away, and you can't blame... And you can't blame everything on not having enough people. We would, I worked with a staff of two, trying to run programs for a city of 40,000-plus people. You can't use that always as an excuse. You have to get people out there to help you. I support this. I think it's a great idea to have the scoreboard. I was never against it. I laughed when you said, wasn't supposed to go there. But I can understand the confusion that might have happened as far as the split, whatever. But if you're getting $1,000 a year, you're not doing a lot of park rehab. But that should be done now. And I know the season's just about over. But I am blown away that we would do this to the youth of our city by ignoring the requests of coaches, coaches and volunteers to get this stuff done. Totally appalled by that. I'm sorry.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Not sure what purpose this serves, but I'm the trust fund alderman. Park Rehab has $80,363 in it, according to the budget book. I think that's a snapshot from probably the end of, maybe April. Established for the funding, Park Rehab at 11 parks within the city of Nashua. Agent to expend, Director of the Public Works Division. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie?
Thank you. So, you know, it's, you know, it's great that the Bettenger family donated this scoreboard and, you know, I'm not sure, you know, that I, you know, I've gone to games at Murray Field and it's, you know, I was, I was, on the one hand, I was kind of impressed with, you know, it was like a little Fenway Park. On the other hand, I thought, you know, why do the kids need this? Why do they need an electronic scoreboard? But they have it and, you know, thanks to the Bettenger family for donating it. And I hate to speak against, you know, a plan to generate income other than from the taxpayers to help, you know, finance this, you know, the leagues and the, you know, all the kids playing baseball. That's a great thing and, you know, it's hard to argue against that. However, if I could ask through you to Corporation Counsel, and I apologize for not asking you this ahead of time so you'd be prepared, but I'm concerned about the second paragraph that says, "Further resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashua, that the City of Nashua will put the advertising space on the back of the scoreboard out to bid and enter into contracts for advertising on the back of the scoreboard." During our committee meeting, it came out that this sign that's on the back of the scoreboard was never permitted. It never went, it never got a sign permit. You know, this sign is an off-premises sign, which is prohibited in the, you know, this is in a residential zone. So, you know, they didn't get a permit from the city. They didn't get a variance to allow for it. And I don't know if they got a building permit and if it was inspected by, you know, the electrical inspector. So, that all came out during the committee meeting. So, my question to Corporation Counsel is, if we adopt this, does this second paragraph somehow authorize this non-permitted sign? And does it obviate the necessity that they get a permit? You know, that they get the proper, you know, that they follow the ordinance, the sign ordinance in the proper way?
Well, I did ask that question. And I was told that, yes, that the proper building permits and electrical permits were issued. And the way it works is if you don't meet the zoning ordinance, you can't get a building permit. So, I wasn't involved in that decision. But I'm told that was done at the time the sign was, the scoreboard with the sign on the reverse side was first erected, that it was properly permitted.
Okay, may I follow up?
Yes.
So, at the committee meeting, we were told differently. You know, I don't know, isn't that what was said, that there was no permit?
Alderman Cle?
Thank you. I think what I said was, considering how all of this had happened, I seriously doubted it had been. But since we spoke, I have found out that it was permitted on all avenues of it. I don't know whether or not it went to zoning. I assume it had to have, otherwise it wouldn't have gotten the building permit. But may I add one comment?
Yes.
After speaking with Director Sullivan as well, after the meeting and so on, if things change on the sign, such as the type of lighting and lumens and so on, that there would have a different aspect of it, there would be potential that it would have to go to zoning each time a new contract was done, depending upon on the way it was. But if everything more or less stayed the same, the lighting didn't change or anything like that, they would not have to go in for a new variance or anything else of that nature, so.
Okay. Well, in light of Corporation Counsel's statement that it did get a permit, I'll withdraw my objection.
I want to clarify. I asked the question, that's what I was told. I'm not guaranteeing that a building permit was properly issued. But I asked the question, that was what I was told.
Thank you.
Alderman Komo?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I'm not, I might get the number wrong, so forgive me. But the last I knew, Parks and Rec had 17 employees and there's a lot more than 17 parks in the city. So, I have a hard time blaming them for, you know, the shortfalls of some of the fields. I know things have to get prioritized and there's a lot more that they do than just maintain the baseball fields. I coached for a long time. My son played for a long time in the city. I've been on a lot of the different fields. Some of them are great, some of them are not so great. And that goes within the individual leagues. I know, you know, Cal Ripken has Murray, which is really nice, and Dubie, which is really nice. And then, you know, you tier down from there. Lincoln Park is okay, but not quite as good. And then, you know, there's the park on Robinson Road, which needs some work. You know, Little League has La Joy, which is one of the greatest fields in the state. But then Cove of Rubius, you know, sometimes you get to fight the animals to get back into the outfield. You know, we play at Sunset Heights. But, you know, the schools also do some work on some of those fields that the school teams play on as well. And I know that they have to prioritize things like school playoff games, you know, are done ahead of city rec league and things like that. But I just wanted to clarify, you know, the comment I made about the discussion we had regarding Babe Ruth is, you know, again, forgive me, some of these meetings go back 18 months. So, I might get some of the exact wordage wrong. But I feel like somebody told me they don't even, they could not charge and they basically have all their expenses covered. The league almost costs nothing to run other than buying the baseballs and the jerseys and things like that. So, they charge $20, which is a nominal fee, but they don't need anything more than that to operate it. As far as the equipment goes, that's a separate issue. And I wholeheartedly agree with Alderman Tebow. If these fields don't have rakes and shovels and things like that in the sheds, then we should get them that. And if we can't do it out of the park rehabilitation fund because of the way the legislation was crafted that created that fund, then I'm more than happy to work with Alderman Tebow and Brian Conan over at Parks and Rec. And let's have them come up with a list of what equipment they need at the field. And if they need appropriation to do it, then that's a discussion I'm willing to have because I do agree those fields should have those maintenance items. You know, if there's people willing to do the work on the fields, but they don't have the tools, then that's a problem. So, let's get them the tools. But I think that's a separate conversation than this one. So, that's a conversation I'm more than welcome to have. And if, you know, anybody wants to work together on that, I'm willing to do that. And I think we should engage Parks and Rec and find out what they need, what kind of to-do list they have, and let's help get that done. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
So, I never hit a baseball until I was like 17 because I never knew I could. Being legally blind, I just sort of assumed I'd never be able to hit the ball. And it took some of the kids that I went to high school in an open gym class saying like, "Wait a minute, you've never even tried?" And yeah, literally, the first time I actually tried to hit a ball, I got a pop fly. So, at least I know I can hit, I can swing fast enough for it. But that's also an experience, I think, that's important for kids to have. You know, as a clinician, often I get children, especially after the COVID-19 pandemic, we have parents that are trying to figure out how to get their kids to better interact with other kids, how to improve their self-esteem. A lot of them have way too much energy for the school setting that they're in. And they need the confidence builders that sports brings and they need the sense of camaraderie and structured social interaction that being on a team brings. So, I mean, we're not just talking about recreation, even though literally the department's called Parks and Recreation. When it comes to youth, there's more going on than just recreation. It's about social experience. It's about learning. It's about that kind of collaborative activity. So, these are very important conversations to have. Like Alderman Karen, I'm disheartened by the descriptions of all of the things that Parks and Rec could be doing. And I think ultimately, we should reach for that. While I also recognize, as Alderman Komo pointed out, that Parks and Recreation and DPW are very busy, have a tremendous workload. Often, Parks and Rec may be double tasked or pulled off of what they're doing. I know they've been trying to be innovative and creative with their approaches. I know in the past, we've done legislation for electronic sprinklers and those types of things to kind of be a little bit more frugal and economical with maintaining the fields, but also make sure that the necessary maintenance is being done. And I also know that constituents who live in Ward 4 have brought up the fact that we need more maintenance happening at the fields at Led Street. So, I think this is a very productive conversation to be had. Looking at the legislation, the first part of it deals with accepting the donation. The second part is where I get stuck. And so, I wanted to ask through the Madam President to Corporation Counsel, how pinned down are we to the divisions that are presented as a special revenue fund? I was under the impression that special revenue funds can be altered by the will of this board. But I don't know if this represents some form of contract? So, if Corporation Counsel could enlighten me?
Well, there's intention, right? You're not bound to appropriate that sum of money. But whatever sum of money you appropriate into this fund, this resolution says how it's going to be divided up. Now, it also says that the intent is each year to appropriate the same amount of money that the advertising generated. But you don't have to do that. That's aspirational. You find out instead of generating $10,000 generates $100,000, you may want to alter how much you want to appropriate and then you may want to use the rest of it for something else, like reducing taxes or buying more rakes for Babe Ruth fields or buying other things for Babe Ruth field or other things that are necessary in other areas of expenditure for the city in general. So, the answer is you're not bound beyond whatever you appropriate into this fund in a given year.
Alderman Lopez?
Just to follow up to either Alderman Cle or Komo. If we were to try to rework this tonight in the middle of a Board of Aldermen meeting, would that leave a sour taste? Was this like a negotiation where the partners were like, "Oh, we'll give you the sign" or anything like that? Or more to the point, is this also something we could kind of circle back to without necessarily running into any, "Well, we did it, so now we can't just change it the next week" situation?
I have Alderman Cle and Komo. Alderman Cle?
Thank you. I think Alderman Komo will say the same thing. Our original negotiation was rough in that Cal Ripken really felt that they should have all of it and that nothing should go to anybody. We negotiated it at that meeting that there would be a particular split and that once we hit a certain dollar amount, then it would get split more evenly. Again, it was very complicated. I think $10,000 was the number that was done that. And at that point, no money was going to go into the city fund unless it hit a certain dollar amount and so on. That was the original negotiation with everybody at the table. And then Alderman Komo and I talked about this as the co-sponsors of it. And it was just too complicated. It just didn't seem equitable enough. I do understand wanting to do something for Babe Ruth. I'm willing to listen to whatever has to be done. But the truth of the matter is, this has got to get done. And I hate saying that we need to get this done quickly. But in order for it to get out and for us to meet that end-of-the-year deadline, we're, I think we're really kind of pushing things. But I'm willing to listen to anything. There's been a lot of negotiation. I, they're not going to, Cal Ripken is not going to be happy with this as it is because it's not what they wanted. Twice, it's not what they wanted. But we felt it was the right thing to do and that's where we came up with this number. And if it's okay with Madam President, if Alderman Komo can add to that.
Alderman Komo?
Yes, thank you. All of that. And then, the only other thing I was going to add is, you know, like I've mentioned a couple of times, we've been doing this for close to a year and a half now. There's been so many meetings with DPW, Director Foto, Parks and Rec, Brian Conan, the legal department, the stakeholders at Cal Ripken and Nashua Little League. And the result of all of those meetings and those hours and hours and hours of conversation was this legislation that we have before us. So, while I'll certainly entertain, you know, discussion on further amendments, I would also respectfully ask that, you know, the process has been playing out for quite some time. This is not some, you know, spur-of-the-moment decision that Alderman Cle and I came up with on a whim. This was heavily debated, heavily vetted. And, you know, the 10% to park rehab, that's what DPW asked for. So, it's not like they're getting short-changed or anything like that. This is the agreement that pretty much all the parties came to and everyone felt was the best conclusion for everyone involved. And I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't support further amending it away from the terms that all of the stakeholders had previously agreed to. Thank you.
Alderman Marin?
Thank you. I'm waiting patiently. I just, a comment, just, I'm just very disappointed to hear about the Babe Ruth getting shafted, it sounds like. And I can't agree more with my esteemed colleague from Ward 7 regarding, there's only so many times you can say you don't have enough staff before, you know, you ask, "What's your productivity look like?" And, you know, "What do you have to do to maintain for the kids in the parks and not just the kids' families as well?" And it seems to be a pattern. I don't want to be a conspiracy theorist. But, you know, from working-class families and working poor in this city seem to be disproportionately shafted by DPW or one of the divisions over and over again, whether it be from lawns getting torn up during paving and taking months for reimbursements to come through or trashcans getting knocked over by plow trucks and, you know, no care in the world sometimes in some of the situations. Or the elderly can't get, and kids can't get their sidewalks shoveled for whatever reason or even sand put down. So, I'm not sure if we drew out a chart how many things that are disproportionate to the lower-income spectrum in the city. It seems like there's a continuous pattern. And I'm not sure if the mayor can maybe address it or find out what's going on with DPW.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think, in my opinion, the DPW and Parks and Rec, they're understaffed. They don't have enough people. And even if they had every position open, they still don't have enough people because we don't have enough money in this city to do what we all think should be done every day in every situation. I think they do a very good job. I don't disagree with the comments that my previous speaker just said in that when there is things that go by the wayside, they disproportionately affect some of our lower-income residents. And I think that's a byproduct of... And I think that's, that's a byproduct of the simple fact that when anything goes by the wayside, it's always going to affect those who have less. Because those that have more can take care of it themselves and they often go out and do that. So I don't disagree that we do need to look into some of that, but I also don't blame the Public Works Department. I think they're spread thin and I think they do a wonderful job. I really do. With the resources that they have and the staff that they have, I think they do a great job. Am I happy to hear that they told Alderman Tebow that they don't have money for a rake? No, because I think they should have money for a rake. However, you know, there, I, I, I do think that they do a good job. In regards to the ordinance here, I, I am going to support it. I think that having heard the discussion this evening, a lot went into this, this has been a year, as was stated, a year and a half of negotiation. It's a complicated matter that involves a lot of different parties. And, you know, no one's ever going to be happy in a situation like this. No one's going to be 100% happy in a situation like this. But the work was done and it's not my place to second guess it at this point. So I, I am going to support it.
Alderwoman Kelly and then Alderman Tebow.
I just had one question through you two, Attorney Bolton or perhaps the makers of the motion. In terms of the stakeholders that you guys worked through, did anyone talk to the current advertiser? And do we have any legal issues with terminating a contract that was set up in perpetuity?
My understanding is he was informed of what was going on. I don't believe he was completely happy about it, but I don't believe he's got any right to have it any other way. So I'm not concerned about our exposure.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to disagree with, respectfully with Alderman Clemmons. Because I think there's a couple of parties that were pretty happy about it. Little League, who had nothing to do with the sign and just getting 45% of the proceeds. And even Parks and Rec are getting 10% that they weren't getting last year. So, I mean, I think there were some stakeholders that were happy. The ones that weren't with Cal Ripken, obviously, because they weren't getting 100%. In response to the trust funds, I mean, 80,000 for 11 parks, that's, that's not a lot of money when you, when we know how much it takes to, to fix a park. And, you know, I know Alderman Como has talked about fixing lights at some fields and, and some of that stuff, you know, fits into under 80,000, but actually really rehabbing a field is going to take more than that. And like you said, there's 11 parks on that, but there's a lot more parks in the city. So I don't know where they're getting money for the other parks, not just baseball, but, but all kinds of parks. And, you know, this is turning into a rake game. You know, I've asked them a few times if they're not going to give me one. Obviously, they're okay. You know, it disappoints me when they say it costs nothing for the program. Because you'll put nothing into it. Like, they don't have to do, do stuff. They can just, they don't need people. Just buy the stuff. There's good coaches that will do the work for the game, 100%. They will, I know they will. They've been doing it for 40 years, some of them, 30 years, 40 years. So we don't need people, we don't need staff, we just need some tools, that's all. And let the, the coaches do the work to get the fields ready. We're not looking for the, the greatness of the other fields that we have. You know, I mean, Cal Ripken's, it's, I'm sorry, it's a rich league. They have money. They give sweatshirts out to people, the kids who graduate out. There's lots of money going through there. And, and so that's why I was like, they're not being hurt this much by this ordinance. They're really not. They just have to do the work they were doing before that to get the money that they were always getting. So, you know, I, again, I'm probably not going to support this. And again, it's not, it's not for the lack of Alderman Clea and Alderman Como trying to negotiate. I know it was tough. I know who you're negotiating with. And that's not a tough, not an easy person to negotiate with. They're always right and they're not. Not in this case. So I'm not going to support it for that reason.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 123-128 as amended. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, one nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-128 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-23-129 authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into contracts with South Eagan Valley Transportation Collaborative, Nashua Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-129. By roll call.
You've heard the motion for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Lopez.
Now, I missed the vote, but according to the agenda, I'm not on there for sponsor, endorsers. So if I can be at it, that would be nice. If not, I'll just have a vote.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Yes.
15 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-129 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-130 amending, renaming Los Amigos Park to Reverend Dr. Perkins, Los Amigos Park.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to, sorry, let me show my, my script right. I'd like to make a motion to amend R-23-130 by replacing it with the golden rod copy of amendments that were made at the Committee of Infrastructure meeting. I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Lopez.
So this is to honor a very important person in the community. She's contributed a tremendous amount to our city. And in doing that, I've been working with the family to make sure that we're putting the name and the salutations appropriately. Each one has particular significance. So out of respect for the family, I ask Alderman Timmons and the Infrastructure Committee to be sure that the language was corrected to closer to my original form. So the golden rod copy, we, there are too many golden rods now. The golden rod copy of the amendment reads, "From Los Amigos Park to Reverend Dr. Bertha A. Perkins, Los Amigos Park." So the explanation is basically, "Los Amigos Park," Spanish means "our friends." Reverend Perkins was a great friend to the community and she believed in bringing multiple cultures and multicultural groups together. She felt that it made us stronger. She is a singular person, Bertha A. Perkins, so we want to make sure that her name is reflected. And she's also achieved multiple titles of recognition, including Reverend, which is a spiritual leader and credentialing within the church, and doctor, which is an academic degree. She is also recognized as Pastor Perkins, which is very important to the people and the community at New Fellowship Baptist Church. I think maybe Alderman Timmons could speak more to that. So there are a number of titles. I also appreciate the Infrastructure Committee's support because this is probably the longest name for a park that we have so far, um, closely by Le Parc de Notre Renaissance-Français. But for someone who has given so much to this community and, and has done so much for our city, I think it's important to recognize her appropriately.
Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
15 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a recommend, I'd like to recommend final passage of R-23-130 as amended.
The motion is for final passage as amended. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
15 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-130 is declared duly adopted as amended. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-054 amended relative to public comment.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance O-23-054 by replacing it with the golden rod copy of amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee meeting. By roll call.
Motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually going to move for a re-referral of O-23-054 to the Committee of Personal Admin Affairs by roll call and would like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have talked extensively about this ordinance, rightfully so. As I feel, obviously, we all got the information from the ACLU about a potential lawsuit over the language that was passed before. And this ordinance came in to help try to see if we could avoid that. And I think the purpose of the discussion we had in committee was to avoid that. But what we have before us today in the golden rod copy, I don't feel solves the problem we set out to fix, we being Alderman Sullivan and Alderman Como, when we came together to write this ordinance. It just doesn't seem to fix the issue of can it get us out of potential, a potential lawsuit? At the last personnel meeting, I, I attempted to table the ordinance to see if we could put new language into it. And that motion unfortunately did fail. The next morning, I did talk with Alderman Sullivan pretty extensively about what type of language we would look at. And we came up with what I think is something that would make the chamber happy and still, still solve the issue for everybody, which is making sure we can have decorum here in the Aldermatic Chamber, which I think we're, at least us 15 are very, very good at. And I feel with this new language that we would put in, in committee, would be able to solve this problem. I don't see the issue with sending it back because we're still under the old ordinance. So we're still, you still can't use crude, vulgar, profane or obscene remarks in public comment. That's still prohibited. So why don't we send this back? Let's work out this language once and for all and finalize it and make it happy and, you know, make sure, pass it with a 15 to nothing vote. I just feel at this time, it's not ready for prime time and it doesn't, it just doesn't help us with the goal we went out to, to achieve with this legislation. Thank you.
Motion is to re-refer. Alderman Clemmons.
Through you, Madam Chair, can I ask the previous speaker what, can you give me a preview of what that might be?
Can I defer to my colleague from Ward 9?
Sure. Alderman Sullivan.
Making me show my hand. Asking to strike line 10 completely and replace it with the president of the Board of Aldermen or presiding officer has the authority and responsibility to maintain decorum during a public meeting.
Oh, God, definitely said that, but thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that was brought forth by the sponsors of this. As the chair of this committee, I will say that I'm not going to support re-referral. We did table this. We brought back people who could speak to it. Attorney Bolton was asked many questions around words like decorum and whether that was strong enough in his opinion as our legal counsel. He did not think it was. We talked in depth about crude, vulgar, profane, all those words. We looked up definitions. And so while I appreciate that the three of you may not be happy with where we are here, I feel like the work was done in the committee and that this compromise we came up with was, are crude and vulgar a little bit more squishy, fine, but profane, we know what profanity is. You can define it. So I appreciate it. I understand it was your piece of legislation, but I do think the work was done in the committee. And I, I don't know why referring it is going to, if you want to make the motion now, let's make the motion now. It's, it's had in committee for two and we probably have talked about this for three to five hours at this point, so.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Corporation Counsel. Profane and or obscene, I'm not a legal scholar, but is that like one of the only exceptions to the First Amendment, other than like can't, you can't say fire? Like, is this going to restrict someone's speech?
There are many exceptions to the First Amendment. I don't even know if you call them exceptions. There are, the First Amendment does not give unlimited right to say and do anything, anytime, anywhere. Reasonable time, place and manner prohibitions, restrictions have been upheld time and time again. They should be narrowly tailored to an important governmental objective. I think maintaining the seriousness of meetings, making them accessible to a broad element of the community, which may not, certain people may be so offended by certain language that they would not come to meetings or tune into meetings, or they might prevent their children from watching these meetings or attending these meetings. We do have young people who occasionally get assigned by homework, by their teachers, to watch these meetings for the purpose of experiencing local government. We often have children who have achieved some goal, whether it's winning a sporting event or some academic honor or something, come to our meetings and receive recognition for their achievements. I think keeping that a desirable thing and not having their parents be concerned about the kind of language they were exposed to is an important governmental interest that you may be trying to uphold. Another factor that courts consider is whether there are alternative means by which the viewpoint that may be hindered can be expressed. The English language has millions of words and essentially you're trying to restrict a half dozen, a dozen, probably no more than that. There are plenty of other words that can express pleasure, displeasure, hostility, anger, without resorting to these words in public comment. Not to mention that people can always send you letters, engage in conversations with any of you personally when you're out in the community, give you telephone calls, send you emails, make comments on various websites and Facebook pages and the like. So there are plenty of alternative means of communication by which anyone's viewpoint So there are plenty of alternative means of communication by which anyone's viewpoint can be expressed without the use of these prohibited words in the public comment period during your Board of Aldermen meetings. So a general prohibition or a general authorization of the presiding officer to terminate someone's speech if decorum will be impacted, I think that has much less chance of being upheld by a court. Decorum is a word much like civility or respectful, which would place a lot of discretion and judgment in the hands of the presiding officer. You're lucky right now that you have a presiding officer that uniformly exercises good judgment. But nonetheless, a court might say that that resides, that is present, allowing too much discretion to reside in the control of a single person. I think the compromise to strike crude and vulgar, which may be less certain as to what speech is being restricted, is probably a good one. I do think the words profane and obscene do make it pretty clear what you're talking about.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up and one more question. Thank you for that very articulate explanation. I know some people, members of society with personality disorders may struggle to understand your keen insight. So I appreciate that. I know it's never going to prevent someone from coming up here and doing it anyways, right? But my second question is, would this resolve, the way it's written now, the ACLU's concern?
I doubt it.
You doubt it.
I can't, I can't be certain one way or the other. But basically the discussion we had with one of the lawyers from the New Hampshire chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union, he seemed pretty much of the opinion that any restriction at all made it subject to legal challenge. He did not threaten on behalf of the New Hampshire Civil Liberties Union to bring suit. He made it clear that no decision has been made as to whether they would bring suit. They did not indicate that they had a particular plaintiff that was motivating their communication with us. There is another organization, New England Foundation for First Amendment Freedom, or something of that ilk, that he indicated that they might wish to weigh in even if the Civil Liberties Union did not. So, yeah, are we sure that whatever we do is going to be successful in preventing lawsuits? No, and I can almost guarantee you that no matter what you do, the city will continue to be sued over various things.
Thank you so much for your legal wisdom. I appreciate it.
Alderman Timmons.
Madam President, we did hash this over and I agree with Alderman Kelly over and over during that committee meeting, although I didn't have a vote on it. I thought the, the motion to strike those first two letters, I mean, two, first two words out of the language was appropriate. And sometimes you don't get what you want. So you cannot come back and say, okay, it didn't work in committee. I'll bring it back to the floor table. I think that's wrong. So I will not support anything that was already decided in committee externally with, with, was discussed at the last meeting. So, I mean, I talked about what happened when I was in the military. I could have got killed in the, the city by that language when people come and say they attacked me. That was really bad language. When somebody accused you of being attacked, that can get somebody killed, especially somebody that looked like me. And that's what some lady did in the city. That was not right. So words do hurt, words do kill, and you cannot say and do whatever you want. So I don't think that we should send this back and I wish my, I mean, I pray that my colleagues will not refer it back. And that's all I have to say. We already discussed this. I thought it was a done deal. It coming back again, I think that's wrong.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I, I agree with those two words being struck. And the reason that I agree with those two words being struck is that they are difficult to define in different people's minds, so. But I don't agree with sending it back to the committee. I watched the committee meeting this afternoon. There was a lot of discussion, extensive discussion, including with Attorney Bolton. And I thought it was well-defined and, and, and pointed out. As having chaired several hundred, maybe a thousand meetings over my forty-six years of civil service, city service, you're, if you do what I just heard, may want to be brought up in the, if it was re-refered, puts a handcuff on the, on the chair of the committee or the president because now you're saying it's all in their mind what should or shouldn't be said. And now they'll be attacked personally because, oh my God, that person didn't agree with what I said. This gives a little more meat to allow civility in the meetings. And I think that that is critically important. So I won't support re-referring because I think it had extensive review at the committee meeting. And I agree with the current amended version.
Motion before us is to re-refer. Alderman Juddi.
Thank you. So I apologize for not being at your meeting. You know, I, I wanted to be there, but it, you know, it was a Monday night before the Fourth of July. It was kind of in the middle of a holiday weekend. But I did watch it and, and I, I, you know, I, I do know that it's, that you put a lot of work into it and, you know, you, you considered, you know, a lot of items and I don't diminish the work that you did at all. However, had I been there, I would have made a pitch for, you know, to, to perhaps, you know, add to what you've done. I don't think what you've done goes, goes far enough. I think that, you know, remembering that the, the original purpose of this ordinance was to, you know, make sure that we had the ability to regulate our meetings, make sure that they're, that they're appropriate. And it was, you know, a lot of concern about language and the fact that this was viewed on public television. And, you know, the ACLU got involved because, as Attorney Bolton pointed out to us, and their letter pointed out to us, a Massachusetts case. Massachusetts case is very different than our case. And in the Massachusetts case, their, their ordinance said all remarks and dialogue in public meetings must be respectful and courteous, free of rude, personal, or slanderous remarks. And so the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts said that, that that went too far in, in preventing people from expressing themselves at, at a meeting. And they based it on, you know, their constitution, which has a the exact same wording, if not, you know, similar, if not the exact same wording as our constitution has. And that's, it's not the part of the constitution that talks about, you know, the the right of free speech. It talks about, the people have a right in an orderly and peaceable manner to assemble and consult upon the common good, give instructions to their representatives and to request of the legislative body by way of petition or remonstrance, redress of the wrongs done them and of grievances they suffer. And so the court in Massachusetts said that the constitution only requires orderly and peaceable manner and that respectful and courteous is, is, goes a lot farther than just orderly and peaceable. You know, when you think about it, you know, what does orderly mean? It means complying with the law. You know, peaceable means it's nonviolent. So you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not as well-versed in this area as Attorney Bolton is, but I, I did do a little research. And, you know, I, I did find reference to a case that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, the Federal Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit approved language in a city council in California that said that it shall be unlawful for any person in the audience at a council meeting to engage in disorderly, disruptive, disturbing, delaying, or boisterous conduct, such as, but not limited to, hand clapping, stomping of feet, whistling, making noise, use of profane language, or obscene gestures, yelling, or similar demonstrations, which conducts substantially interrupts, delays, or disrupts the peace and good order of the proceedings of the council. So, you know, I, I think, you know, language, you know, closer to that, you know, would go farther than, than what's being suggested here. I agree that, you know, crude and vulgar are hard to define. You know, so removing crude and vulgar, I think is probably a good thing. But, you know, this is, this is kind of limited to language. Although I, I suppose paragraph eleven, which says that the presiding officer has authority to terminate the remarks of any speaker when such remarks do not adhere to this ordinance or other applicable law. So, you know, I, I suppose, you know, there are other applicable law, I mean, there are laws against defamation. There are laws against, you know, fighting words that, that would try to, you know, encourage people to, to react so, so vehemently that they, they resort to violence. I mean, there, you know, there is a statute, New Hampshire statute on disorderly conduct, which off, you know, defines a whole bunch of other things and I, that, that fall under disorderly conduct. So, you know, anytime anybody's committing a crime during a meeting, you know, I suppose paragraph eleven may give the presiding officer the authority to, to stop that. So, you know, maybe it's okay the way it is. But I would, you know, I, 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 when, when I saw at the meeting Alderman Govea make a motion to table, you know, to do further research and to offer, you know, different alternatives, you know, personally, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, you know, we as a group oftentimes seem to feel that we have to deal with legislation as quickly as possible. And we, you know, we send it to a committee meeting and that, you know, we, we expect, or the committee expects to act on it that evening. And, you know, we're very reluctant to table anything for further study. You know, I think that this is very important legislation. And you know, I think, you know, when I, when I read the letter from the ACLU, I mean, you know, my, you know, I've, I've never dealt with them like Attorney Bolton has, so he knows better than I do. But my first inclination is, gee, you know, they certainly can't be against our, our needing to regulate our meetings. I mean, the constitution, the Supreme Circuit Courts certainly have, federal circuit courts have certainly approved that and have said that, that we have the right to do that. And it's just a question of, you know, how far can we go? What language is appropriate? And, you know, so my immediate concern, my immediate thought was, okay, let's, let's come up with some suggested language and invite, invite Attorney Clement Talwitz to, to comment on it and see whether or not we can get, you know, a compromise, you know, that would meet our goals and satisfy his concerns to make sure, to, to the extent we can, you know, that we're not, you know, fighting about this in, in a, in a court case. Attorney Bolton seems to feel that, that what we've come up with, you know, is defensible. He feels fairly confident. But he also said he can't guarantee it. A wise man to, to say that. Because whenever you go to court, if you've been following the U.S. Supreme Court lately, there's no guarantee, you know, precedent doesn't seem to to have as, you know, the, the authority that it used to have. So, so I would be in favor of tabling this so that, so that we can work on it and come up with something better.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I, I'm not going to be in favor of sending this back. And it's not that I disagree with anything that the previous speaker said, but this, some of the things that, that he brought up have to do with the audience and and behavior in, in the public outside of public comment. And this particular ordinance has, is relative to public comment, in particular, the three minutes when somebody is up at the podium speaking. So I don't, could we amend it so that it included other behavior? Sure, we, we could. But the concern that was brought up by the ACLU and the lawsuit was in regards to public comment and those three minutes that we allow someone to speak. So while I appreciate that, I don't think it's relevant necessarily specifically to what we're, what we have in front of us. And in addition, I agree with the pre, a lot of the previous speakers who said that, you know, this has been debated at the committee meeting. I agree with Attorney Bolton that, you know, that removing the first two words is, is, you know, a good move. It buttons this up. So for all those reasons. And, and, and in particular, this last reason, I mean, I, I think if somebody wants to sue the city, they're going to do it. And if they want to sue us over, over the fact that we're not going to allow them to come up and swear at public comment and say rude things at, at public comment, then take us to court. Because I would love to see that argued in front of the court. Because I, I have a feeling, I, I'm of the opinion with Attorney Bolton that we would win that as well. Because there's plenty of, of examples out there of, you know, government agencies and places putting restrictions like this in place to keep decorum. So I think it's pretty, pretty good as is.
Alderman Camo and then Alderman Cleese and then Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. So I also would not support re-referring this at this time. Couple of people have said some variation of the phrase, you know, respecting the committee process. And this was debated in committee and this was what came out of the committee. And I myself, not more than probably half an hour. And I myself, not more than probably half an hour ago, made a plea to you all on a previous piece of legislation to respect, you know, the work that had gone into an amendment. And it would be awfully hypocritical for me to go back on that now and suggest that we do the exact opposite on this. I would like to point out that we did do exactly that a couple of months ago on another piece of legislation where we said, we recognize that the committee decided to table this. And then we said, ah, the heck with the committee, let's do it anyway. So, it'd be nice to see a little bit of consistency, but in general, I do respect the committee process and I appreciate all the work that went into this. So, for those reasons, I would not support re-referring it at this time.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I feel like I'm just basically echoing much of what has been said. I'm not in favor of re-referring. Chairwoman Kelly had mentioned the fact that it had been tabled to give time for more conversation as well as to bring Attorney Bolton to the committee. And I, I think that they did a lot of good work there. I didn't get to attend the first meeting, but I did attend the second one. I did watch the first one. There was a lot of dialogue, conversation, and because there were so many questions, that's why they tabled it. I think to re-refer it, to just agonize on it, and I don't, I don't think that anybody's rushed to judgment on this. I don't think that we, we're trying to, to pass or not pass something. So, I, I think it needs to be dealt with here, and I would not support re-referring. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
I would support to send it back. I do think, given the discussion that's happening here tonight, I do think that there is more discussion that needs to be had, especially when it comes to something as delicate. I was thinking today on the way over here, it's like a game of Operation, you know, you can't touch the sides or else the buzzer goes off. And I feel this is one of those types of legislation where you have to be very careful. You know, there is, there is the First Amendment on the table, there's the ACLU issue, there's a lot of language that's out there. I've been very vocal about where I stand on it. I am not going to open that nut again, don't worry. I, I just would offer to re-refer it because I think more discussion would be a good thing. Thanks.
Motion on the table is to re-refer, saying no further discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
No.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Camo.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
Four yays, eleven nays.
That motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage as amended.
Madam President, I think we're still on the motion to amend now.
Motion to amend. Thank you. Did you have something to?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Saying none? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of Ordinance 023-054 as amended, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderman Camo.
I'm just kidding, I don't like to speak to it.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. If, if, I'd like to take my name off of this as sponsoring it. This was not the amendment that I put forth, so I do not want my name attached to it. Thank you.
Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to reluctantly vote yes on this because it does, it cuts it in half. And we'll see what happens in November and maybe we'll bring up legislation again. I feel like right now what we're doing is, we're gambling. We'll go to the casino, we'll throw it all on red, we'll see what number comes up. So, we'll win it all or we'll lose it all on a spin, but at the end of the day, this does take away half of what the original ordinance was. So, in this, in the sake of compromise, I'll, I'll go along with that, but it's a hard vote. Thank you.
Further discussion? Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries and Ordinance 2354 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-133, relative to the transfer of one hundred and ten thousand from Department 162 Street Lighting Account 54100 Electricity to Department 159 Hydrants Fire Protection Account 54835 Hydrant Fees.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-134, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid program project agreement with the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation for the purpose of improvements to the Walnut Street Oval Intersection and to accept and appropriate
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, July 24th, 2023, at 7:00 P.M.
First reading of R-23-135, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2023 Relative to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
None.
Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up, Fred Tebow.
Good evening. I'm trying to warm up. I'm Fred Tebow, reside 24 Cheyenne Drive in Nashua. Today, I filed a complaint with the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office, Criminal Division, Public Integrity Unit, Capitol Street, Concord, New Hampshire. Before I read a couple of sentences from the introductory letter, I'm motivated to send this, number one, by the mayor's comments in the public hearing on the budget. I'm motivated by the fact that no Alderman in this chamber, under fifteen Aldermen, acted to protect the cap. I'm motivated by the fact that spending cap calculations in the fifty, in the fiscal twenty-three and fiscal twenty-four budgets completely misrepresent the spending cap. And I'm motivated by several messages verbally, written, I've written, sent to this board, which have been completely ignored. Now, let me read introductory paragraph. You all have a copy, you all get a copy in the mail of what I've sent to the Attorney General's Office. As a longtime resident of the City of Nashua, a former Alderman at large, and as author of the Nashua Spending Cap, I hereby request you file a misdemeanor criminal complaint on the RSA 643:1 against the following public servants of the City of Nashua for their collective neglect.
One minute.
To enforce the spending cap imposed on them by law. I name Mayor Donches. I name Attorney Bolton. I named CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, John Griffin. I named the President of this Board, and I name every member on this Board. The particulars are explained. The text is a nine-page document, could there be a hundred-page document? Nine pages, including some tables. I suggest to read it and hope there's something found of it. If there isn't, we waste the budget next year, we'll be back in court.
Remarks by members of the Board? I'll start over here. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things. Last week, I know mention, a few people mentioned that they watched the meeting last July 3rd. I was, I, I got sent an email today, not someone from Ward 9, but somewhere else in the city, challenging me calling it out, that my comments, where I said, you can say anything you want at any time, in any way, she, and I said that I was an absolutist when it came to free speech, she, she checked me on that. She, she called to mind about inciting violence, certain inappropriate communications that shouldn't be sent, of course. I should have qualified my statements by saying that. I did respond to her email, and I did say that in tonight's meeting, that I would go on the record and correct that, that, you know, when it comes to free speech, obviously there are illegal things that you cannot do. You know, defamation is in there, slander, child pornography, she mentioned, and other things. And I said, of course, I'm not in favor of that. So, I, I wanted to publicly correct the record, and thank you for checking me on that. And, yes, so I wanted to say that. The second thing is, we added, I think we added two trust funds tonight. I did send a note out to CFO Griffin in my attempt to relook at trust funds. We have a lot of them that have been around for a long time, and I asked him if we could look at it in the fall. It's very heavy lifting for the summer, so we'll wait till the fall to start looking at such an interesting topic as trust funds. But I just wanted to let you know that it's still on my radar. Thank you.
Welcome. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things. So, I forgot to mention this a couple of weeks ago, at this meeting, but I wanted to express my thanks to Nashville Public Transit. They were very professional and rapid to respond to issues. I walked in, I keep walking to issues socially in the city, and it's a little bizarre. But I was at my office, and I just happened to be at the front desk, and an elderly person who utises, basically, the Road Runner, Senior Transit, was dropped off. She came up to my office, thought I was a vascular surgeon, which I am not.
You have a big heart.
Yeah, yeah. And turned out she was, she came to 400 Amherst Street, she needed to go to 430 Amherst Street. So, I said, you know what, you just happened to walk into an Alderman. And I got on the phone with Nashua Transit, and they turned the bus right around to pick her up and bring her to the right location. And it wasn't even, I didn't even need to mention that it was an Alderman, it was just, they were very quick to respond, and I appreciate that, and I think that is a kind of, goes to, to show you the kind of community that our city creates when they're so willing and able just to resolve a quick issue like that to make sure someone gets their doctor appointment, which she had been waiting for months to get, by the way. And now she, she was able to get the, the healthcare that she needed. Second, this is my last board meeting as a resident of Ward 7. I'll be relocating to Ward 9 next week, and I just want to express my thanks and gratitude to everyone in Ward 7. It's, it's a great community there. I served as a state rep in Ward 7. We always have a wonderful Alderwoman in Ward 7, a great moderator who happens to be in the audience. And it, it's just a great sense of community, even with people you disagree with, you see them in the neighborhood and you say hi, and pleasantries are, are, are great. And I just will miss that area of Nashua, and I will definitely be back over to visit for sure. My friends that I've, my neighbors who are now friends that I've met over the last eight years there. I don't want to keep going nostalgic on, you know, buying my first home in Ward 7 and all these other things. But the last thing I would say is, I know we had a conversation about the inequity of lower-income people getting the shaft. And I don't disagree that that's just how it happens, because wealthier people have the ability to have means and pay for things on their own or resolve things on their own, do different types of Little League and pay for it out of pocket. But we shouldn't accept it as a norm, that it should be just, all right, yeah, if we can't do it, we can't do it, and you're getting shafted. We should really look at the equability of lower-income and working-class neighborhoods, just like Ward 7, where a lot of these things have come up for me when I've been a state rep or an Alderman over there. All right, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
To Alderman Moran's observation, the public should be aware that the Nashua City Bus has reinstated a number of their roots. I know I had mentioned earlier this year that a number of them were being suspended or altered. They've been doing a really good job in a very concerted effort to recruit new bus drivers. I've met a lot of them, and they're really good people, so it's exciting to see new faces. It's gratifying to see maybe a little bit of relief on the faces of the ones you see every day. And it's definitely good that there's more coverage and more mobility for people to be able to get around that are either on fixed incomes or don't have access to vehicles or don't have a driveway to put a vehicle in or any other number of things. So, I think Nashville City Bus is doing a great job on that end. I just want to acknowledge that Representative, Ward 4 Representative David Cody did resign on the 4th, fifth of July, I think it was the 5th of July, necessitating the communication and the efforts by our city clerk to try to efficiently include a, oh, state representative special election into our existing election cycle so that we don't have to have our poll workers duplicate efforts and spend more taxpayer money to try to fill the representation that Ward 4 deserves. So, I want to thank Representative Cody for his years of service, and I want to make sure that the community knows that this is something you should be looking at. We need more representatives to step forward. There is the municipal election coming, coming in November as well, and it's a good time for civic-minded people to start looking at how can they get involved and what kind of things can they do to serve their community. I wanted to thank everybody who came to the Tree Streets Block Party, because I don't think we've actually had an Alderman meeting since then. It was a great event, it was a great opportunity to include the, the Juneteenth celebration as part of our community festival. And then tonight, I want to express thanks for everybody who supported my efforts to have Reverend Dr. Bertha Perkins recognized through Los Amigos Park. I do also want to comment, I think this might come under committee announcements, but it's a little long-winded. At the Human Affairs Committee next week, on Monday... At the Human Affairs Committee next week, on Monday, we're trying to look at issues of substandard housing and tenant rights, particularly because we're seeing a lot of conversation in the public about homelessness and unsheltered people. We're seeing huge forces moving in terms of organizations sprouting up from the ground and finding enough need to resonate with their supporters to have the developmental achievements in three years that some places work 10 to 15 years for. Stepping stones particularly comes to mind. There's a lot of work in the community because this is such a growing problem, and we need to be addressing the systemic factors that are contributing to it. We talked earlier tonight about how we want to see Parks and Recs doing a lot more, and DPW is understaffed. DPW is doing a lot of cleanup and a lot of community coordination to try to address the impact of unsheltered people in our community. So is National Police. They're both, I guess, knocking it out of the park. They're way outside of their class. And they're doing the best that they can, as are a lot of the nonprofit organizations in the area, because there are systemic issues at work. We need to be able to be working on finding the contributing factors, the contributing actors, the organizations that are helping, and the ones that may be contributing to the problem, and using our role as the city and the municipality to coordinate and lead these efforts so that we can start addressing these problems rather than encouraging our outreach workers to play a defensive action when we can do a lot more to prevent unsheltered people, homelessness, and those factors. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to recognize the fact that, as was mentioned, Ward 4 State Representative David Cody has resigned. David has served our city well for decades in the New Hampshire Legislature, and I believe before that, at least, I don't know if he was on the school board, it was before my time, but definitely fighting some of the decisions that the school board made back, or were potentially going to make back in the late '70s in regards to handicap accessibility. So this is before the ADA. And arguing against the fact that one of the school board members at the time said that we didn't need to have elevators in the school because we shouldn't have to educate those children. And that was Nashua, that was a school board member back in the '70s when they were building Nashua High. David's always been a leader from that moment, I'm sure, before, and through his entire career, fighting for those who need somebody to fight for them. And he worked his way up to being the minority house leader when he took over for Rennie Cushing. And so really, he has a storied career. And he's somebody that we all should be proud of in Nashua. And I just want to thank him for his years of service. And on a last note, I hope he wins his lawsuit against the legislature for not allowing him to participate remotely as a representative because that's the reason that he had to resign. His lawsuit right now is in, is stuck in court. I believe a judge is still reviewing it. But I hope he wins because that would be a really good cap on his career fighting for us. And it's a shame that he had to resign in this respect because, you know, he has health issues and can't make it up there. He was duly elected by the citizens in Ward 4, repeatedly, over and over again, because he does do a good job. And the fact that the legislature decided, for whatever reason, that they're not going to let people participate remotely. We have somebody here participating remotely tonight. I just, I hope he wins his lawsuit because, again, he has fought for our city and for our citizens. And it would be really a feather in his cap, and it would be monumental for the State House to actually allow there to be different representatives who maybe can't physically make it but can participate and give a voice to those types of people and those people who can't make it every day up to the State House for whatever the reason might be. We call it a citizen legislature, but really, it's only a citizen legislature if you have the time to get up there every single day. And the only people that generally have the time to do that are wealthy people, retired people, or college students. And that's why, that's who you see up in the State House. And it's frustrating. So whenever I hear the word "citizen legislature," I kind of laugh because if you work a regular 9-to-5 job, you're not going to be up there. So I hope you win one for us, David. We're counting on you. We support you. I'm sorry you resigned, but thank you for all your service.
Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank everyone who supported Resolution R-23-128. One thing that we neglected to mention, I'm surprised this never came up, but one of the reasons why it was so important to Alderman Clay and I to make sure that some of the money generated through this advertisement stayed with the leagues is because they use that to subsidize their costs to make sure that no child in this city that wants to play baseball will ever be denied that opportunity based on a lack of means. I know from experience that both leagues will offer free scholarships to athletes that can't afford them. They will subsidize equipment, uniforms, things of that nature. So just another reason on top of, you know, a laundry list a mile long of reasons why both of those organizations are such an asset to the city. Some towns are lucky to have one league, some have none. We're lucky enough and blessed enough to have two amazing leagues that are so good that, you know, players from other towns that don't have leagues are allowed to come play in Nashua. I know Hudson, Hollis Brookline, some of the surrounding towns that don't have their own leagues. Those chartered organizations, Little League International and Cal Ripken International, allow those athletes to come and play in Nashua. And it's a testament to how great both of those organizations are run. So I'm glad that we'll be able to support that effort going forward. The only other thing I wanted to mention real quickly, I don't want to quibble. Maybe it's a good night to talk about words and what they mean and things like that. But I bristle when I hear the term like "shafted," especially when we talk about a city organization shafting people, things like that. It makes it sound intentional when I know that it's not intentional. All of our departments, I feel like they do a great job with the assets that they have. I think it was Alderman Clemens, I don't want to misquote you from earlier, said something to the effect of, you know, "Not everything that everybody wants to get done can get done every day." They do the best they can with prioritizing things. And, you know, while the conditions of the baseball fields might be the most important thing to me today, they might be the most important thing to Alderman Tebow today, you know, the people that are using them, the players themselves. You know, there are other needs in this city, and it's hard for a department like Public Works, Parks and Rec, with a very limited staff to say, "We're going to allocate these manpower resources, these equipment resources to a recreational baseball field when, you know, maybe there's a tree down across, you know, a road or a path somewhere that they need to redirect those assets to take care of." So I'm confident that they do the best that they can. If they need more resources, I'm more than happy to have that conversation to help make sure that they get what they need to try to make sure that they're serving all of Nashville as best as they can. But I just, I wanted to put that out there that I would hate to think that anybody thinks that a city department is, you know, going out of their way to, you know, shaft people. I don't think that's the case. I think definitely people are affected by things in different ways, but I definitely don't think that it's intentional. And I know that our departments do the best that they can. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, three quick things. I had calling another additional budget meeting on August 14. That's when BAE is going to come in and explain the program that the mayor mentioned earlier about working with Nashville Community College and training people in building chips, microcircuits. And I know that BAE called me and asked me whether some of the Aldermen would like a tour of BAE. And I said, "Well, even if this legislation wasn't in place, they probably would." So I think he's going to offer a tour of the facility, especially the microchip facility, which is pretty amazing when you get to see it. So August 14 at 7:00 p.m. here in the chamber. Another thing, I've talked to a couple of the division directors, and at least for budget, I'm sure that if they have legislation coming in, there'll be somebody here to explain it. And the other thing is, we're in competition with every city around us for CDL drivers, commercial drivers licenses. And I know that we're doing, we're training them, we're paying to train them. But if you want to really narrow that shortfall, you have to increase their statement. That's all I got.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things here. I just want to, you know, just reiterate a couple of things. And to Alderman Clemens' point about Representative Cody, I'm not going to rehash everything he said, but he's 100% right on all of that. We wish him the best, and thank you for supporting Ward 4 in Nashua all those years. You know, and trust funds, to Alderman Sullivan, I voted against one tonight, just wanted to say that. Yeah, put me on your list as someone against trust funds. So as President Cal Ripken, we never let a kid that couldn't afford it play. We had scholarships. We had different things. If Cal Ripken, I don't know, I can't speak for Little League, but if Cal Ripken is saying that this year we subsidize kids who can't afford it, they're wrong because we always let the kids play. Even if it hurt our books, we let them play. It's, we want them to play. We want all kids to play baseball. Everyone from the city, anybody who wants to play can play. And, you know, I think my whole point with the DPW is I do think they do a good job in the city overall. It's a big city, a lot of parks to manage. But when I hear Cal Ripken's getting preferential treatment over Babe Ruth when they have the resources, that's disturbing to me in a way, right? So it's not that they're taking away from a tree down. I get it. There's other things that they have to do. 100% agree with that. I was just trying to get them more money. I was supporting DPW here. I wasn't against DPW. I'm not, you know, going after them. I was just disappointed that they said, "Yeah, we're good. We're good." I hope they say that to the mayor when they put their budget in. We don't need any more money, right? Because even though it doesn't cost a lot to put that on, it's been fall seasons when they can't even have hats for the kids. So you can't tell me it's okay, and then I want money. I was just trying to get you money, DPW. You guys do a fantastic job. And by the way, even with the grass at Ledge about a foot long, I found a way to win the championship, so my team won. Thank you. They were a great, great bunch of kids, and I hope to get them in the fall. And lastly, speaking of DPW, fireworks. I know this is Alderman Jettie's favorite topic. But fireworks were fantastic this year. I haven't gone in about 35 years because I just don't like that many people in closed spaces. But I decided to go, and I thought they did a fantastic job. And, you know, I know it was pushed to another day, and it was a lot of complaints about, you know, they probably could have had them. Probably could have. I mean, Manchester did them two days later. So, you know, you gamble on that sometimes. You don't know what the weather is exactly going to do, and you're trying to make sure that you can put on the show you want to put on. And so I thought they were fantastic, and thank you to the DPW and everyone that was involved in putting that show on. So thank you. I don't hate the DPW.
Alderman Moran.
I'm sorry. I had a question for the city clerk, and I completely forgot, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And we were talking about Ward 4. There is a selectman in Ward 4 that's charged with very heinous crimes, obscene crimes.
They're not in Ward 4.
Exactly. And I understand that they're no longer housed here in the city of Nashua. What's the, what are we doing here?
So when our office finds out that someone may not be domiciled in Nashua, and we have more reason than not to believe that they live somewhere else, we can flag them as a 30-day letter voter. We have a scheduled Board of Registitors meeting Friday at 9:30 here at City Hall. There are certain current voters that are on that 30-day letter list. The Board of Registitors will approve that, or, you know, they'll look at that list. Most likely, they'll approve. And then we can get 30-day letters in the mail. When a resident gets that letter, they have 30 days to prove to our office that they currently live in Nashua. If they don't prove that, then they are removed from the board list.
A follow-up, Madam President. Would that also, thanks. Would that also remove them from any elected position that they have?
So a selectman in a ward would have to reside in that ward. So if they come off the voter list, they can no longer be a selectman in that ward, and the vacancy is filled by the remaining selectmen. They'll have a vote. The two other selectmen will appoint a third for the next two elections.
Thank you, and I appreciate the second pet at the iPhone.
I would like to mention David Cody. I'm proud to call David Cody a friend. Of the four decades-plus that he put in service to the state of New Hampshire as a Ward 4 representative, I served four of those years with him. A terrific guy, very smart, very well-liked. He, he'll be missed up there. He's really served us well. So I appreciate everything you said, Alderman Clemens, about David Cody. I think you were spot on. All right, committee announcements. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. The monthly meeting of the Building and Industrial Development Authority, aka BETA, is July 21. It's a Friday, 9:00 a.m. upstairs City Hall Auditorium. All are welcome.
Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs Committee is on Monday. I'm driving, I'm blanking the time right now. Madam Clerk, is it 7 o'clock, I think?
7 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So Monday at 7:00 o'clock, we're meeting for Human Affairs. We have the minor change to the CDBG money that was introduced today, and then hopefully we'll have a conversation about tenant rights.
No else? All right, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I would like to move that to July 11, 2023, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn, but just before we do that...
She's not here.
Well, still yet. I don't know.
No, none.
Just before we do that, I would really like to thank each and every one of you for the good dialogue this evening, whether we agree or disagree. I think we were all pretty respectful, and I really appreciate that from every one of you. Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We are adjourned at 9:58 p.m. Thank you, everyone.